Meeting of the planning board on June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the May twenty-third meeting. Have a motion or a second.
A motion, we approve the minutes.
Mr. Bates, Mr. Cormier.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Or any discussion? Any discussion? There's no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passed. Minutes are approved. Now we got the Monticrista Joint Transportation Committee.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's, you're the member right now.
Yeah, I am.
If you need to stay on.
Does anyone want us to replace me on that?
I think you're doing a wonderful job.
I second that. I think you're doing a terrific job too.
Mr. Bates, I need your opinion.
Actually, you need a vote, so.
All right.
And make the motion that Mr. Schwartz is reappointed to the Monticrista Joint Transportation Committee.
Second.
Any other discussion? No? We've already had. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No opposition? I guess I'm, oh, I won again. Wow.
Chris, do we need the IRPC rep too? Don't we have a planning board IRPC rep as that?
Next thing on the agenda, roll business. Clock and cross on open space. Who wants to speak now?
Okay. Members of the planning board, thank you for meeting with us again. My name is Peter Campabasso. I represent Harbor Classic Homes. This is a follow-up to the last meeting. I apologize that we were not able to get you this plan prior to tonight, but one of the issues that was raised, discussed the last time, was to have some input from the landscape architect. We do have with us tonight Larry Green from Cargi Companies in Lamentar. He is a landscape architect. He prepared the plan. He's walked the site. He's familiar with it, and I think I'll turn it over to him to sort of explain what he's done with this layout. So, good evening, Larry.
Good evening.
So, the plan you see before you is the open space plan. And the thought process I had in creating this plan was, had a couple of design thoughts. Suppose, A, cluster development, B, to create visual interest to the interior of the property, provide recreational opportunities in the interior of the property, provide varying lot size configurations, and to make potential connections to the open space. Those kind of the design principles behind the plan you see before you. In reference to cluster development, per year by law, basically fifty percent of the lot has to be preserved as open space, and of that fifty percent, you can, you have to exclude wetland area. So, basically, that this kind of light green or celery color is all your wetland system. So, the white space you see in the middle is kind of the area of, kind of the area of your development. So, that's where I've kind of clustered development to the interior of the property. In reference to visual interest, proposing loop roads, very similar to what you've seen before, but in lot configuration, obviously, linear layout is your most efficient configuration. But within the proposed right of ways here, we're proposing a serpentine paved gate, which gives you visual interest, helps to slow the traffic, gives you varying size of green spaces to the left and right of the roadway. And then in reference to recreational opportunities to the interior of the property, you kind of see these two white spaces here, proposing two pocket parks. You know, they could be, excuse me, they'd be just green space, lawn area, sport courts, sitting areas, dog parks, any of that variety, just kind of designating spaces here to provide interior recreational opportunities. Then in reference to varying lot sizes, we're proposing two small cul-de-sacs cut off the corners of the development. Gives you, gives you opportunity of separation, larger lot sizes, which gives you bigger green space, bigger buildings, little different geometry, just a little more variety. And then in reference to connections to the open space here, proposing two, almost like trail heads. You can see the light blue here, two designated trail heads coming into the open space. Proposing a pathway here, and a pathway here, that then connects into this large existing trail network to the rear, rear of the property. That's the quick summary of the sketch you see before you. Yes?
How many dwellings?
Seventy-six.
All single-family?
Correct.
Want me to pull forward?
No, it's okay.
Did you, you folks take away the buffer? It was a buffer at one time.
There was one here, you know, that there's conversation, we had a lot of conversation on that. Do you keep it? Do you not keep it? And I found that over in these developments, when you have smaller open spaces, that it becomes almost an area of long flipping central. And then so the thought was that to minimize this open space, create a larger open space here. And then I also thought was, you already almost created an open space with these five, six existing parcels here. So, you're almost getting a buffer, and then you're almost getting a buffer here, because there's about a fifteen, twenty foot grade change in that area as well. So, that's why, my thought was to eliminate that and preserve the bigger track.
When you see a question of the serpentine drive, as you mentioned.
Yep.
How's, that almost looks straight. Is that a serpentine?
It is. I can show it to you, I can pull it. You can see that this pavement actually has a meandering limited pavement. Obviously, during the subdivision process, you'd have to ask a waiver from the planning board to have your pavement not fall the centerline of the roadway. But that was, that was this, this kind of meandering limited pavement that goes like this.
The trees are over the way, you can't see it.
You can see the detail on the plan, of course, so we can move it for you.
It might be easier black and white than figuring, or either color. What color do you see best? If you kind of see the long, long radiuses, you know, thousand-foot radiuses of, you know, I'm not trying to create a vehicle dilemma, but just kind of, just kind of little curved, curved linear traffic patterns.
In previous plans, you had exits going out to the open, open space.
Yep.
You down with those?
I did. And my thought was that, that I found in these developments that it's almost better, I found that it's almost better to define a trailhead. And so people know where that is. But I found that when you have an interior, that people get confused, like, who's that guy walking my dog between my house? And that was what my thought was, was just have two defined trailheads, and then come around. And I could email this plan first, because that would help.
Did they make provisions for the exits to the trails when they turned to the property? It ties, like you said, ties into the network.
Are those lots still eight feet wide?
Yep.
Should be hundred.
Yeah, they're all eight thousand square feet. Yep, correct. And then there's a few, I think from the table below, I have eighteen of them over, over eight thousand, and a few, the table in front of me, we have eight thousands, nine thousands, some twelve thousand. We have a couple that are in a twelve, fourteen thousand square feet. Just kind of give you that variety in size and scale.
Could you show us the trail network again? I was, I had my head down while you were something.
Sure. So, these kind of, you see the light blue here, and the light blue here are, are trailheads. I guess interiorly proposing a, you know, sidewalk around the perimeter of the property, then you'd have a trailhead situated here, and a trailhead situated here. Proposing a new pathway here, and a new pathway here, and then that connects into this long dash of the existing trail. There's a bunch of other linear, small paths interiorly here, but I just didn't show those. This is kind of, this is kind of core. So, that's new path connecting to existing, new path connecting to existing. Call off some areas, you know, here's an area of glacial erratic, some large wooded areas, kind of a high point, kind of in within the interior of the property, that path, that path system.
Did you look at any ways of tying those trail systems in any other way? By, I know at the last meeting, I shared a plan. It was a plan that was done in two thousand and seven. It was a concept open space plan. And it shows the roadway coming in, meandering more towards the east side of the lot, and then coming back and joining in. Similar type layout, just not as condensed on the site.
We, we talked about it, we still, we've, you know, done some trace on it. But I guess it got into, hey, let's, if the, my thought was, if we're trying to preserve, then let's preserve the larger tract land instead of having segmented open spaces like that plan showed. Obviously, it's beautiful, it gives you a variety of open spaces, but it, I, I guess I found that it's, that in dealing with land trust, they like larger tracts of land, not smaller tracts of open spaces. And that's why, that's why.
I think a lot of the conversation along the way, and from the planning board's standpoint and my own, that, that layout that we see is very dense.
Yep.
And it's not spread out throughout, not that we want it spread out through the whole entire parcel, but maybe spread out a little more with more meandering roadways, connecting lots, a less denser pattern.
Yeah, we've done those, I think you've seen one before. I'll just put this one on. You've seen that one that has the interior looped open space, if you're thinking something like that? This is not an idea.
You ever seen that one?
I'm just going to use this as an example, but I've bet, I've bet on these years later, five, ten years out, in that this open space almost becomes a maintenance contention, that everyone, okay, it's being mowed too much, or it's not being too mowed enough. And I've found that is, like people, if there's an open space, wood is, people say, okay, that's wood, it's preserved, it's great. But I've just found that these become maintenance, maintenance issue. And that's why, that's why we went with that. A dense, a dense building. But I was hoping to discuss. And I didn't mean to trump Wes here.
I think what we'd like to do is, Larry's focus has been on trying to get the input that addresses the landscape architect aspect of the open space. I think at the last meeting, Trevor did provide us with that conceptual plan back from two thousand and six or seven. And I know that Wes has tried to incorporate some of that in a redesign. And what we're hoping to do is, is go through the various plans that have been presented with the intent of sort of narrowing it down, and getting some, some feedback from the board as to what we think you like and what we think you don't like.
Trevor, do you want to go over that other plan now?
Uh, just to the board.
So, as Mr. Campabasso stated, at the last meeting, Trevor had given us a copy of a plan that was done back in two thousand and seven on this property, that created a little more open space in, you know, a middle parcel, something similar to what we had talked about before. Also, some open space along the backside. I know at the last meeting, there was some conversation about, you know, showing some varying width of open space, a little more narrower open space in the back here, where we're giving the parcels to the abiding properties, and then making it a little wider in the back of the multifamily units. And so, using, using those comments, and again, that plan that Trevor had given us at the last meeting, I laid out a plan, similar to that other plan, without the two cul-de-sacs. Looking at the plan that you had given us before, they included an area outside of the RR district as part of their open space. And so, as part of this process, you know, it was brought to our attention that we could only include the RR district within open space. So, we had to eliminate some of that, develop that they're showing, the two cul-de-sacs into that area, to make that fifty percent open space requirement meet. And so, what we're showing is similar road network here. You know, some, obviously, change in direction, some curvature in the road, curvature in here. There is a more gentle curve in this location here, similar to what, you know, Larry was talking about, where it's not such a dramatic curve, but it is a, there is a curve there, about a thousand-foot radius curve in the middle there. So, then I laid out the lots, eight thousand square foot lots, just to show you what we could do for lots. I know the lots that were shown on that other plan that you had given us were much larger than eight thousand square feet. I think we counted about sixty lots within that development, and made much, much greater length of roadway also. And so, what we looked at is, you know, we're at two acre open space in this location here, about four, four and a half acre open space in the middle there, that would be, you know, those two parcels, we would imagine would go into an association. And then we have the larger piece of open space that would go to the land trust, having those two separate entities now owning the open space on the property. And again, as we talked about the last meeting, there, there's no definitive use of the, the open space. Obviously, it would be up to the association to determine what they want to do with the open space, but there isn't plenty enough room there. And the grades of that open space are relatively reasonable to do, you know, a decent amount of uses on that. And then we do show, you know, similar to what the board had recommended before, they're showing the different locations to connect in some of the, the paths that are already out there now. We'd have to relocate the, the path connection in here. And actually, some of the, the cartroads now run through some of the wetlands, so we'd have to relocate it along the backside of that lot to bring it back out to the connection that goes onto the abiding property. And then we would, you know, similar, have that trailhead off here that already exists. And then the trails out in this direction here, we would kind of connect it to there. But this kind of gives you a different option, different than what we've shown you in the past, but similar to what you had seen before on that other plan. Again, we're looking at single-family homes on this. We didn't show the duplexes, the preferred option for the applicants, would be introducing family homes. That's the market that they would like to develop toward. This plan shows seventy-nine lots. And I'm showing right now max number of lots that we can get out of this. There is some play with regards, there are a couple of lots here and there, because when we do the stormwater calfs, a couple of those lots probably end up going away because of the stormwater. But that will get taken care of when we do the definitive plans and further along in the design of this. But this is just done to at least give you an idea of a layout and what we're looking for right now, and a different variation of what you've seen before.
So, what is the frontage on these?
Eighty, eighty feet is the ones on the straightaway, and then depending on the curvature, depending on the curve, some of the curve frontages are different. And I do show, and I do show some different house layouts there too. I know something that we talked with the applicant about is, depending on how the lots sit, you know, they'll have to look at different house models. Lots of the lots, if the lots were to stay this way.
Well, I thought one of the plans we had were, I thought were pretty close of a hundred-foot frontage, so it wouldn't be so dense between the houses. And that was one plan that was there, and I thought we were pretty close. But now you come back with eighty, again, so it's like we're going backwards again. Now you have seventy-nine, we have seventy-six. So, it seems like we're, we keep going back and forth, so we're never going to have a plan to vote on, because it's, I got, I can see all the plans I have here.
Yep, so the hundred, so the hundred-foot frontage one also showed duplexes in that development, to make sure the unit number was closer to what they were looking for in unit number. And so, we want to show you the different variations of the development, where we had a mix of duplexes and single-family houses on that. And so, if they were to go straight hundred-foot frontage, they would not do, the, the, the number of lots would be reduced substantially for that.
What do you mean by substantially?
You're talking a quarter of the lots would be reduced.
And how many lots would that bring it down to?
So, if we're at seventy, realistically, we're, realistically, we're at seventy-six. Like I said, there are a few lots that would be removed to take care of the stormwater, once we get to the stormwater design. So, you're taking a quarter of seventy-six, you're taking, what, nineteen, you know, nineteen away, right? So, we're going to be close, you know, we're going to be.
So, just, just to clarify, when the actual subdivision plan is prepared, and the detention basins are located, the areas that are within the detention basin cannot be counted towards the open space.
So, we have to eliminate lots.
So, depending on how large the detention basins are, building lots will have to go away, because the open space can't go away. We have to meet that fifty percent requirement. So, even though this plan shows seventy-nine lots.
Yep.
It's doubtful that there's going to be seventy-nine lots in a final proposal.
We're, we're closer to seventy-four or seventy-six lots is what we'd be looking at, depending on how the drainage comes out. But we're not to that point yet. We're not to the design phase of the development. And so, like I said, if you go to a hundred feet for all of them, you're going to lose a quarter, and you're going to be under sixty lots.
Be a nice development though.
So, is it possible to show the board a plan that shows that?
It's not something that the applicants want to do. It's not something they're agreeable to do. They want to do plus than sixty lots on this project.
It, it would make the, it would, it would make the project not, not economically viable because of the roadway, the infrastructure, and the utility costs, they're substantial. And, you know, the number of lots that it's been, we're trying to compartmentalize it to strike a balance. If we start going below, if they start going to numbers along those lines, it's not economically viable for them to even consider it. So, we, we can't, if we showed a plan, it wouldn't be, it just wouldn't be an accurate presentation, because it's not something that the applicants can entertain, to be quite honest.
So, I guess what we're hearing is seventy-six is the number, anything below seventy-six?
No, that's not what I said.
Well, I mean, that's what I've heard. For about like four meetings, every design that has come back to us has the same amount of units on it. And I think the board's been very clear that they think it's too dense for a project, or too dense of a layout. And every time you come back with another plan, it's the same amount of units. And so, I think what the, and what Mr. Cormier's trying to say is, is there a less dense conceptual design you can come back with that, maybe it's more than sixty, maybe it's less than seventy-six, where the planning board might feel a little more comfortable with the layout, the lot size. I'm just throwing that question out there because it's been seventy-six from day one.
Yeah.
And it hasn't changed. And I, I hear the board saying they'd like to see a less dense development with less, I might, I don't, tell me if I'm misspeaking, but I mean.
Exactly.
With less units, with a little bit of that. Yeah, I know we don't have to come to a decision or a number tonight, but that's something that I've been hearing all along, but I haven't seen.
Well, one of the things that I think we're trying to be sensitive to is not creating a lot of impervious area. The, the, the plan that you provided, the conceptual plan, it's a nice conceptual plan, but that plan creates a lot of impervious area, probably wouldn't meet standards that exist today. That was back in two thousand and six or seven. So, what our analysis keeps coming back to, knowing that we have to meet, Wes has made it pretty clear, that we have to meet certain LID requirements. We're trying to limit the impervious area, and by doing so, we're concentrating the impact on the entire parcel to try to maintain and create as less of an impactful project. Now, in doing so, you know, there might be a way, sure, before, you know, this does open it up, this type of a layout does open it up a little better, less dense than what, when everything is compacted right in here. So, clearly, this is much less dense than what the other plans have showed. And if you superimpose the layout that you gave us over this, you'll see that the only thing that's different from this and that plan are the cul-de-sac areas that were up in here, that really hit into the wetland areas, and they encroach on buffer zones. So, it's not realistic to develop. So, we, we stayed out of those areas intentionally, which just keeps bringing us back to this area of development, which makes it the least impactful, is going to make it a much better project as far as not impacting the surrounding environment in the surrounding areas, and making sure we can comply with, you know, not creating too much runoff, and things of that nature. It's hard for us to give you an exact number, because until the analysis is done, we can tell you that it's, there, there are going to be loss of lots, because as you have pointed out, the detention basins are going to take away from the usable area, and we have to maintain that open space requirement. You know, there might be a way to, to branch off and create. I don't want the focus to be strictly on a number of units or lots. We're trying to propose a development that is within the spirit of the open space regulations. Nothing that we're proposing is contradictory to those, expands those, or it, they're very, very, very within the guidelines and the, and the requirements of the open space development. So.
Thank you, Peter. I, I understand where you're coming from, but I think you can maintain the impervious surfaces that you have there, and maintain that design layout by increasing the lot size. Of course, I can't see what lot sizes are. I don't have a list in front of me of what the lot sizes are, so I really, but just knowing what I know from what I've seen in the past, from my previous meetings, I'm assuming they're probably in the eight to twelve thousand square foot range.
Eight thousand square foot, yeah.
Eight thousand square foot.
Yeah, because that's the requirement of the open space, so that's what we use.
That's the minimum requirement.
So, and now repeating, if we're to use the same layout of the road and go to hundred-foot frontage, we're going to lose a quarter of the lots.
Maybe I'll do it to all of them, Wes. Maybe you just do them to a certain area, maybe just the lots on the outside of that corner of the open space, or certain, I don't know.
So.
You're the engineer, I'm not, you know, I'm just, we're not trying to design a project this way, we're just trying to give you input to where we feel comfortable.
So, here, here, here are some, some of the thoughts that I, I keep going back with. Thinking globally, my sense is that if the development has to have a homeowners' association, the maintenance of roadway utilities, detention basins, and things of that nature, I would imagine that people that would eventually live in this project would want to have some sense of, I guess, privacy, if you will. And some of the stuff that I've been bouncing around is, it, it might seem to have too many access areas to the open space. And I thought one of the good points of Larry's plan was to sort of concentrate so that if the public's going to have access to this trail system, that the public has access at certain points where they won't be interfering necessarily with the neighborhood and walking through people's yards. You know, maybe if we can eliminate some of that, it might help make some of the lots a little bigger. And then, how much of open space you want, like a parcel like this would probably have to be maintained by the homeowners' association, because I'm, I would imagine that the land trust is probably not going to want to own an isolated open space area that they can't access, or that they'd have to go through somebody's yard to access. So, we're trying to balance that as well.
What's the size of that area in the middle?
Four and a half acres, four and a half acres.
Are there any type of landscape?
Some nodes there, I see.
Yeah.
Natural measures.
Natural features there that you can leave natural, rather than just having a big four acre field of grass?
Well, the intent is to leave it natural until...
Okay.
We could, we could leave it unwooded if you would like.
No, no, I'm just saying, no, I'm not saying.
And put trails through it. My, you know, my initial thought was just to make trails through it and and make it more of a wooded area and make, you know, keep the trails. There's already some, the cart roads are already go through that area. They come in here, and that was my thought, was to tie in, right, tie into that and then tie back out that way, and then, you know, there's a high point up here. And just have a nice, really forested area in between the development, that was my thought, because, you know, you're smaller lots, you're gonna remove most of the trees.
So if we, if we did that, then we would be coming back, and it would be a little more condensed, so.
So getting a reference to the forest there, that that's, it's been, it's been a successional forest, it was cleared years ago, so you don't have like these mature oaks and stuff like that, you're getting that white pine, poplar, birch getting turned over to your, to your. So there's not a lot of like visual interest in it.
What's the size dimension of these homes? With the attached garage?
So the normal ones I was showing, thirty-four, twenty-six, with a twenty-two, twenty-two garage.
So thirty-four plus twenty-six, that we said, with the garage?
Thirty-four by twenty-six, and then a twenty-two, twenty-two garage.
And, and the garage attached? So thirty-four, twenty-two, that's fifty-six, right?
Yeah, fifty-six, or we can do a fifty-eight.
When I'm just saying fifty-six, and the frontage is eighty, so on both sides, it gives you what?
Twelve to fourteen.
Somebody help me out here.
Yeah, twelve to fourteen feet. On each, on each property line, so you're looking at maybe twenty, maybe twenty-four feet between each house. Well, your offsets under the regulations is ten. So at the most, you're gonna have twenty, at the minimum, you have twenty-two between houses.
So if you add that, it's fifty-six, if your, if your frontage is eighty, you only have twenty, so you only have fourteen left, seven on each side?
Twenty-four left.
Twenty-four left, so it'd be.
Fourteen on each side.
Twelve left on each side. Twelve left on each side. And then twenty-four.
Irretal, twelve.
So it's about twenty.
I'm just looking at this room where twelve is from the wall.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-four between each units. And that's where, it's not out of the character for cluster development. Like most communities when they have cluster development, that's the purpose of the cluster development, is to have less road running.
You know, and this, I believe this is what we're talking about, the density, I mean, that could be the window of your neighbor right there, obviously, right? So if you were in this house, that's your neighbor. Correct, right? Am I wrong in that, by saying that?
No, you're twenty-four feet away, though.
Not on each side?
Yeah, you are. Each lot has twelve feet, so twenty-four.
Irretal, two very.
I understand, but on each side of the house. Am I adding this wrong?
A bit twenty-four.
Twelve and twelve, twelve on each side.
Twenty, well, yeah, but then you add the next lot over, so you're twenty-four from each side. That's what I'm saying.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah, which is, which like I said.
No, I understand, yes, I understand.
If you took these two homes, which are really close, they'd be twelve feet on this side to the boundary line, twelve feet on the side of this one to the boundary line, so they'd be twenty-four between.
And that's why, ideally, with the road coming in this direction, that's why I was showing the garage on the lower side, so that you're looking, you know, twenty-four feet to a garage, more than a twenty-four feet looking into your neighbor's, from your kitchen to the neighbor's kitchen, right, or your neighbor's, you know, your living room into your neighbor's living room.
No, I can't think of anything.
Mr. Peters? Well?
Is there a preference between the two options you saw tonight? Is there a preference between the two options you saw this evening, being this one and?
So, can I, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
So, we're seeing this for the first time tonight. I know we've seen other, you know, variations of plans. Would it be possible to get like a detailed list of what each plan represents, or unless it's on that plan, I can't read it from here, but like what we're looking at as far as, you know, size of parcels?
There's a table on the bottom of that one.
Is it? Okay, alright. We're just seeing it for the first time tonight. I would really like to take a better look at it.
I think we need to really look at it.
And then further the discussion at a later meeting, because again, I was hoping we'd get this, this plan, you know, a few days before the meeting, so we could send it around and everybody had a chance to review and read it detail, but.
It's my fault, you're supposed to draw a vast heading, it's my fault.
No, 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 I'm just apologizing, I just, I was just hoping we'd have a chance to review it before the meeting tonight, that's all.
You ask for a preference. Well, my, my personal preference, I like that one. Well, maybe because I see so much green, I see green. That may be it. But, I kinda like this one, resumes along the big open space. So I don't know, I think we're really at a juncture where we really need to look at the plans and together in front of us. And, and then, we can discuss some of the pros and cons of what we like, what we don't like. And, and go from there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Actually, you're putting us in the same position you did last one. We need a plan to vote on.
Well, you're not voting on it either.
No.
Well, there's, there's no vote, we're just, we're just trying to get an idea of a preference, so that we come with an actual submission.
A preference from us, and that's what I thought you were.
So we're not wasting our time, and we actually submit a plan with an application.
So what we're, what we're hoping to accomplish, I think we're, we are actually listening. We do appreciate the feedback very much. And I think we do have an understanding as to what some of the likes are. Obviously, we also have an understanding of what some of the concerns are and dislikes. My understanding of the process is that what we're really doing right now with this discussion is this is the pre-application phase of where we are with the special permit. I think the next step would be coming in with an actual application for a special permit. But what needs to be attached to that special permit is a preliminary plan for the open space that shows the layout that we're proposing. So, a lot of this is being done without any real hard engineering. We're not trying to be evasive in the answers that we're giving you, we're just gonna wanna make a statement that we find out a month from now, or two months from now, is not accurate. I think we have an idea, if you wanna have more discussion, I think one of the things that I wanted to try to get a sense of, and we forgot the board, the last time we were here, we showed a number of plans. I, I think in the plan set we handed out the last time, one, two, three, the fourth plan, it had a, it sort of looked like this.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think anybody was particularly interested with this plan.
No.
So, we were probably gonna eliminate that.
Is that the Taj Mahal?
Yes.
For lack of a better description, yes. I think. This is the third one. The third plan that had the ninety-four units. I didn't think anybody was particularly interested with this one.
That's too crowded.
So, I think when we started to do this process ourselves, when you look at the last three, the last three to four plans, the layout starts to become pretty similar. What's really changing in here is the width of open space behind units, the type of units, and the internal connection points to the open space. So, that's why I think where we, we keep coming back to proposals that look similar to this. Because I think if you look at the last four plans in the, the plan set we gave you the last time, the design seems to concentrate in this area. Because it's, it's just beneficial considering all of the elements that have to be, and the requirements that have to be taken into consideration. I definitely will talk with Ron and Laurel. It seems like some of these cul-de-sacs might be beneficial. But again, no one really, I've learned from experience that people don't have too much sympathy for lawyers. I'm learning full well that sometimes people don't have too much sympathy for developers. But what I can tell you is, it's not an easy business. It's not the way it used to be. It's very expensive today. Cost of materials, it's incredible. And just look around and start looking at some of the prices of homes that are going for sale. So, the economic viability of a project is something that has to be at the forefront of every proposal. But that's not this board's problem, it's the applicant's problem. We're not trying to take too much liberty with that. But a lot of that does drive what they can present to the board, because A, they wanna be conscientious of the cost, but B, they also have to be realistic in what they can actually tell you they're going to do. Because they don't wanna start and then not be able to do it, or propose something that's just not economically viable. So we can definitely go back and come back with some, what I hope to be final revisions, that will incorporate some of the things that you have been telling us at your meetings. We will try to focus on the number of units, the number of lots. Maybe there might be an interplay where, their preferences definitely do single-family homes, it seems to be the best market for this region. Based on what we've heard from some other people in the town, the single-family homes, there seems to be a need, there seems to be a desire with the town for those type of units. But if we can somehow interplay a different type of unit type, and it helps with the lot number and the unit number that's more appealing to the board, we definitely have some options that remain.
So, would you be able to supply the board with the new concepts, or actually, I would even like it if we could get full-size copies of these, so we can actually take a closer look at them. And just to give you better feedback, I think it would help us to be able to review them before the meeting and have, I think, just a more in-depth discussion, I think it would be helpful. So I don't know what the board feels about getting these plans, the two plans we saw tonight, full size to look at, and then if you do come back with some additional revisions based on our conversations here tonight. Yeah, seven, yeah.
What does that center here, that open space consist of again? And it is a little node, it is kinda hilly, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, the high point is in this location here, it just slopes off, but it's not a terrible slope. So if they ever wanna do something out there, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a lot of site work necessarily to do something on that open space.
And it's, it's about four and a half acres of area.
My thought is, the difference between let the forest stay, or cut it all down to make grass, or half, half and half. So I don't know.
I guess the, to be honest, I think that detail can be determined even during the special permit process. Like if you take, you know, we, you like this layout better than the other layout, at least we can start with a special permit application process, and that could be at that point, you guys can actually make an official vote on what you wanna do with the open space.
First, I am on the fence.
Yeah, but you, you don't have to make that decision today, but that's something you can make as a condition of, you know, of a decision.
And I think to Wes's point, even if the special, the special permit application comes in with the preliminary plan, we don't anticipate that that's gonna be the final plan either. There will probably end up being some modifications, depending on what it really ends up looking like. I think you have a very good idea as to what it's gonna look like at this point.
Peter, did we discuss doing the preliminary plan first, and then the special permit with the definitive? I thought we talked about that at the last meeting.
I, I think we, we started to discuss it, and I think what, what I would propose and what I would prefer is that we submit the special permit application with the preliminary plan. Get some of the preliminary engineering done, so that we have a better concept plan, and we can actually talk about some of the technical aspects of the development. And then shortly thereafter, come in with the subdivision, because we'll, we'll at that point have honed in on what the proposal's gonna be, and, you know, modifications that are made to the preliminary plan can be made while we're drafting the actual subdivision plan. So, my, at some point, I was gonna speak with you about this. I think it might make sense to follow that type of a process, because they'll, they'll be consistent. And if, if the special permit application preliminary plan goes well, then the actual subdivision filing, it'll kind of be a matter of fact, because we're, we're gonna be just giving you the, meeting the subdivision regulations and the subdivision standards for the, for the preliminary plan. So it won't be something that's totally new, that the board has to, you know, give a lot of thought to.
And Trevor, if I could interject on that, too. Like, there's a different standard of detail within a definitive plan and a preliminary plan. So during that special permit process, if there are modifications to the layout, we'd rather do that to a preliminary plan. And not have all the grading and the drainage and utilities and all that laid out and designed, and then a layout come out, you know, change in the layout comes, that's gonna be, that's a, that's a real major change. And, and it follows along the process that the regulation has written that way, that, you know, a preliminary plan and a special permit is not at the same time.
I don't know, I read through it many times in my, in my notes. And this is a couple of years ago, when this whole process started, my notes just say, you know, the submission of the definitive plan and special permit at the same time, but yeah, I'll go back and look at it, we can talk about it off, you know, offline, a little more detail. I think my biggest concern was the timeline revolving around each one, because the planning board only has forty-five days to act upon a preliminary plan. And then, you know, then we move on from there, so we can look at it.
I think we, we'll be able to work something out, but my thinking is similar to yours. I wanna be able to get the application for the special permit and the preliminary plan in, so that Wes, when he does start getting into the actual subdivision, the subdivision application would follow relatively soon, so that we could hopefully have each acted on at the same time. That would be the goal.
Yeah, and then the, the public hearings we need to have for each, and, so you kind of want to, you can.
We wanna have them at the same time.
Exactly, yeah.
I'd like to pose a question to the board. Just, we'll do a sort of, a stick bone or something like that. Between the two plans that were given us tonight, which would you prefer, knowing they're not perfect?
I like the second plan. It kind of spreads it out, it gives the roads the curvature, it gets away from the straight roads, the box, boxed area. To work off of that, I think that's.
We'll try to talk about this one, here's the.
Yes.
Try to do my best, man, awake. Does anybody have any questions, Larry? He's gotta, he's gotta scoot out real quick. Wes, nickel, thank you.
I prefer the plan on the left. My left.
And I go either way, but I'm leaning towards the one on the left. This is only to help them.
Yeah, I very much appreciate it.
Right, if we're going to make adjustments to something, if we can limit it to, yeah, to one.
Well, you know how I feel about the eight thousand square feet, I'm not going to change my view on this. But I understand that.
It's just a concept.
I understand the concept, that's fine.
What about roadway layout then?
I hate even to do that also, I just hate myself in position, like Trevor said. I'm only on the planning board, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect.
Do you prefer the open space in the middle or the outside? The reason I ask is, there's a drastic difference between the two of those for the guys and the road layout. I'm not asking you about the lot sizes, we understand your opposition to the lot sizes.
Okay, I'll just go on the record, which I hate, the left-hand side, the one you're holding up.
Well, there's a consensus.
I'm not happy with it, but...
There's a consensus from the board on that.
Roadway, really, I'm looking at roadway layout, you know, what do we, and then we're going to take a look at lot sizes, type of units, stuff like that. Have a conversation internally about that.
Because you can come back with that. And, but if you haven't made changes and if you went up to eighty more lots, I'm going to tell you right now, my vote would be, you know? If you really want to know. We've been discussing, we've been discussing this for a long time.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
And this project's been on the docket for over two years also, and so we had discussed it with the other engineer that was in charge too.
I understand.
So that's my feeling. And whatever you want to do and you want to come back, I suppose, whatever plan you want to come back with, it's up to you, but you know how I feel, so.
I feel the same way, and I owned a house in California and it was, if you wanted to turn around, you had to go, change your mind, to change your mind, had to go outside. My elbow would touch the neighbor's house, you know? That's a bit close.
And if you think people aren't sympathetic with lawyers and architects and developers, try being on the planning board too.
I have been.
Yeah, well, then you know.
I know, yes.
So, but there's potential with the, of expanding lots and still achieving everything that everybody's looking for.
There's a lot, there's a lot that has to be considered. And even though we have been discussing this for quite a while, it's very conceptual at this point, I know that sounds hard to believe, but once the engineers are given a task to start really getting into the nuts and the bolts of it, there'll be some changes, there'll be some modifications, and hopefully we can come back with a plan that's more appealing.
And again, I do like that extra buffer on the bottom of that. The fifty-foot, because first it was a hundred, we've brought it down to fifty.
This one?
Yes.
Yep.
Like I mentioned before, who knows what's going to happen in ten, fifteen, twenty years? Maybe the city would pave it, at least, you know, it's there. I mean, we could put boundaries on those other residents, on, you know, new development. This is where your lot ends, this is not the, I mean, everybody mentioned when they're going to throw their grass clippings in there, yeah, they probably will for now, I mean, who knows? These people on Century Way, they're doing the same thing, so. But I think we'd like to think about the future also, say, you know, city might say, or the conservation, you say, we got some money, we can make a little path going through. So that's why, I do like that buffer.
The only caution I, based on experience and something that Rob, I thought one of the things that was appealing with largely one track going to the land trust. A lot of times homeowners associations, they're well-intended, but most people don't really understand what the requirements are, no matter how many times you explain it to them. And sometimes it becomes difficult for municipalities when they, this person will come and say, hey, you know, my detention basin's clogged, well, it's not our responsibility to... So I always try to limit what a homeowners association is going to be responsible for because I'm trying to eliminate some problems.
Can I ask two questions? So when you talk about, well, one question, well, lots, we talked about lots, and wheels are always spinning when you talk about... So I know you want more frontage.
Yes.
So does more frontage, you just mean more land area or just more frontage, still eight thousand square foot lot?
Well, we had a plan here that we had ten thousand square feet, I believe it was ten thousand, right?
I think some of them were eight or nine.
I know it was ten thousand, but you had a, then you made the duplexes there.
Correct.
But...
Some of them were eight or nine, were they even...
Oh, they weren't eight, I think they, most of them were nine, nine, I can't see this. I think they were nine something, nine four, ten, nine six.
So, that's the reason I just asked a question.
Yes.
Because if we're going to, I want to make sure that, if we're going to look at this, I want to make sure that we look at it and see what the result's going to be. If it's just more frontage that we're looking for...
So you're talking eighty feet, I had mentioned a hundred feet, which would probably be...
So if we're talking a hundred by eight, I'm still at eighty thousand square feet. At least now I may be able to not lose a quarter of the lots. But if I have to go to a ten thousand square foot lot, I'm going to lose a quarter.
No, I had mentioned just the frontage.
And that's why I asked a question, I want to clarify.
Yes, that's what I wanted to clear, yes, I just wanted to make sure that you understood what I meant.
Yeah, and then the second question really is for the rest of the board members, and I think Pete brought it up, is the plan that we have in front of you actually shows multiple access points out to the trails. Obviously, what Larry had shown had the two trail heads. Is there a preference? Would you like somewheres in between? Obviously, if we get rid of some of the trail heads, it creates a little more flexibility in what we can do. But my, you know, my thought was I was trying to connect to every trail head, just so you guys can see where all the trail heads. And I say trail heads, we saw, we walked out there, right, they're all logging paths.
They're not really trails per se.
They're logging paths, a lot of them are logging paths, right, they're walking paths, yeah.
Can I respond to that?
Just, Wes, so I think instead of the board answering that, I think, you know, just look at where the trail system is and the tie-ins, where it would make sense if you were to have a tie-in somewhere in there.
So that would, it's like the real trail system is, right, it's in the back corners out here, and that's it, but there are a lot of them.
But look at the green one, it shows a lot more of the trail system.
But he's looking at the logging paths and the...
That's fine, but if it's there, that ties in to the development, then try to tie it in, have that access point.
Would you want the access to be for the homeowners exclusively or for the general public as well?
I mean, I think it depends where it is and...
That was one of my concerns.
If it's in the middle of the development, then maybe just for the homeowners, I mean, that's my thought. And then maybe towards the outskirts of the development. Maybe even by the small park near it for the...
Anybody and everybody.
And we were hoping to keep this area sort of free because it's probably going to be more of a highly traffic area than up here on Century Way.
And so the reason we asked a question, so when Larry's looking at, so he doesn't show any of those, right, the actual pieces of property, the stems, but we're wondering, if it's going to be for just the residents, we can get into like easement, that we have a walking path through easement up the...
For the association.
The association, right. Exactly, we can just do easement instead and do it in that manner.
Yeah, and you want to, obviously, not encourage the general public to park along the street.
Correct.
With the access.
And that's what we're thinking, yeah.
But you also have to provide them an area where you can encourage them.
And we were talking about that, yes.
And we, definitely.
Yeah, and then that's what we know they did for the Brookside one, right, when they did the, where the cul-de-sac was supposed to go in, they put a parking area, right, for that trail system.
That was the North Carolina Trust, it came out really nice, yeah.
In this landscape, are we, maybe too far advanced here, I mean, is there sidewalks that they were doing?
Yes, there's sidewalks, yes. So the intent is obviously to build the roads, to meet the subdivision rules and regulations such that the roads at least would become public, and that we know that the association has owned the, ought to maintain the basins. And I think that's what, you know, very clear that Rob made that, so that's... Since we know there's an association, the open space becomes a little easier to do with an association because it's already been one in place.
So obviously, the consent sets for us was the other, the other, the other development.
Yeah, I just want to show that, because that would show a lot of the more of an exclusive trails.
It incorporates a little more of the detail that you've been asking.
Yes, yep.
So we can incorporate this detail on here and come back with it, okay.
If we can still get copies of these, I think it would be helpful just first to take a look at them.
Can you drop them off on Thursday morning?
Do you want large-scale copies of all the previous ones or...
I don't think, no, we have the eleven by seventeen, we'll be fine, I think, just because we kind of focus on these tonight. And then obviously, as you mentioned, if you can get us. Our next meeting, Mr. Chairman, I think it's going to be July, second Tuesday in July, so if we can get them, I don't know how far in advance.
I'm sure Thursday.
I'm sorry, yeah, July, yeah.
July eleventh, is that your next meeting?
July one, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So if you can get us...
So you want to have, you probably... I was going to say that we...
I was just making sure you didn't say twenty-seven.
Yeah. What day would you want, you know, it's like July sixth, July seventh? That'd be the Friday, the Thursday, the Friday before the meeting.
Thursday, July...
The sixth?
Preferably earlier than that.
Yeah.
And you like the bigger size?
Yeah.
For all the board members?
Much easier to read.
House sites, fire site's failing.
Be enough time to...
Yeah, I'll get to it. I mean, we're at a conceptual stage, so it's, it's pretty easy to do, it's nothing real technical to it.
I just think, you know, it'll help the conversation a lot itself.
That's fine.
Yep, we can do that.
All right. We helped you a little more.
You did.
We gave you a punch.
Definitely.
No, we, you can have, and we're very appreciative of your time and the feedback, it's very helpful. We anticipate noise, let me put it to you that way.
Thank you, thank you so much for your presentation. July eleventh.
Six thirty.
Yeah? Next meeting, July eleventh, six thirty.
Yep.
Here.
Here.
That's fine, I have, I have.
You got anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
I know we didn't need to discuss this.